Jean, can you hear us?
I'm good.
All right, in that case, I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, May 21st, 2024 meeting. Nice to see so many folks here this evening. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Stroud to offer the invocation for the board as we seek wisdom and guidance in the decisions for citizens of Arido County.
Our gracious heavenly Father, as we come to you tonight, we ask you to open our hearts, open our minds, help us to be good stewards of Arido County, help us to realize that we're here representing a population of 200,000 people, and that we need to take each person and each consideration as we make difficult decisions that impact the lives of every, every citizen of this county. Lord, we ask you to be with us to ensure that we're doing it for the right reasons, that we're doing it for the betterment of the general good. Lord, we understand our decisions impact everyone, and not everyone will be happy. We hope that everyone will understand as we progress through this and deal with this growth and the issues that we have, Lord. We want to thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon this county and the people of this county. Lord, we ask you to be with those in harm's way that protect us every day and keep us safe, those overseas and here domestic. Also ask you to be with those that are sick and afflicted and those don't know you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we begin our meeting, I want to let you know that you will be hearing Commissioner Jean Haupt on the phone as he is at home resting and recovering from a surgical procedure. And Manager Moll, do we have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we do have one adjustment, and that's the removal of economic development from closed session.
No other adjustments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then motion to approve the agenda, please?
Make a motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous. Thank you, Jean. All right. We do not have any recognitions or awards. However, as you can hear, the screen descending, we will be having a presentation here in just a few moments. Manager Moll, do you have anything you'd like to share with us before we start that?
Absolutely, I can. We have a presentation of the Arido County 2023 Community Health Assessment. This is prepared by our Health Department, and it really gauges the health of our community. So it's something that we do, and our Health Department is going to be here to present the results of it. Oh, I see them. There they are. They're in the back. So Danica Savage is here, and she's going to do the presentation for us. And of course, there's Jane Henson, our Health Director, is here as well to support her.
Excellent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Can you guys hear me? All right. My name is Danica Savage, and I am the Health Promotion Coordinator at the Arido County Health Department. So this evening, I will be presenting to you all the 2023 Arido County Community Health Assessment. For those of you who are unaware, the Community Health Assessment is basically an analyzed report of the health needs and priorities of the actual county. And how we do this, we actually compare our primary and secondary data. Our primary data was solely done by surveys. So we distributed several different surveys across Arido County, and we also utilized the United States Postal Services. We utilized a tool called Every Door Direct Mail. With Every Door Direct Mail, we were able to send out over 4,800 QR codes for our county. And this actually allowed us to pick certain ZIP codes throughout the Arido County based off their actual income household. So we were allowed to reach our actual marginalized populations by doing this. By collecting these surveys, we actually had about 614. We compared our primary data to our actual secondary data, which is data centers, the U.S. Bureau, vital statistics, and so much more. So based off this comparison, we actually concluded that our three priorities are mental health, substance misuse, and chronic disease. So I will briefly be going over our primary data and our secondary data. For our primary data, that was based off of our respondents in our community surveys, the female and male response rate for 74% females completed our actual survey. 26% males completed the actual survey. 79% of the populations that completed the surveys were Caucasian, 15% were black, and 3% were Hispanic. I can actually say the page number if you guys are looking on the page. If you guys would like to follow. On page 12, 28% of our respondents were between the ages of 50 and 59. 18% was a percentage for the age groups between 30, 39, 40, 49, and 60 and 69. On page 12, we have the average household income from our respondents. Most of our respondents, 31%, were making over $100,000 per year. On page 13, for our child data, on bullying, 31% of our community respondents believed their child was bullied at times. Also on page 13, we have 66 respondents that felt that their child did not have access to alcohol, illegal substances, while 27% felt as if their child may have access to alcohol. On page 14, the community respondents' top health concerns, 53% felt that cancer was a top health concern in Arido County. 39% said that heart disease, and 38% felt that obesity was a top health concern. On page 15, our community respondent's resource awareness, the resources needed for Arido County. 47% felt that the need for free health screenings were needed in Arido County. 41% felt that the need for financial assistance was needed, and 40% felt that we needed medication assistance programs. Now, moving on to our secondary data, this is the most recent data that is available, and it was collected throughout 2023. Our actual health assessment was just submitted in March of 2024. Now, on page 18, beginning with the population, there was 195,897. Also on page 18, we have our racial demographics, with 75% of the population being Caucasian, 11% being African American, and 9% being Hispanic. 15% of those between the ages of 50 and 59 make up 15% of Arido County. More than 50% of Arido County residents are over the age of 40. On page 19, we have the household income, which averages out to about 73,103. On page 20, our unemployment rate is 3.2, and the uninsured is at 7%. Also on page 20, 26.1% of Arido County residents have high school diplomas, about 21.6% have bachelor's degrees. On page 21, the leading cause of death is cancer, heart disease being the second, and chronic respiratory disorder being the third leading cause of death in Arido County. Skipping over to page 27, for substance misuse, there was a total of 461 drug-related overdoses in 2023. On page 28, it provides the STD cases, which have slightly increased for comedia from 2021 to 2023. 2021, there was a total of 738 cases. For 2023, we have a total of 814 cases. On page 29, our infant mortality rate has increased slightly among our African American population since 2019, at a rate of 10.9 for 2021, at a rate at 12.9. Again, this is the most recent data that was actually collected. On page 33, in 2021, 20,571 children were enrolled in Medicaid in Arido County. So moving along to page 37, for mental health, there were a total of 34 male mental health-related deaths and 43 in Arido County, and 43 females in Arido County, my apologies. The highest suicide rate last year was amongst the ages of 20 and 29. Now, on page 38, we have the comparison of the actual peer counties of Arido County. Arido County is ranked third highest amongst its peer counties for the homicide rate, and second amongst its peer counties for diabetes. Now, over the next four years, we will be taking this data, and we will be analyzing and trying to improve in the areas of mental health, substance misuse, and chronic disease by evidence-based programs, information, education, and by actually partnering with several different agencies throughout Arido County. That completes my summary of the 2023 Arido County Community Health Assessment. It is found on the Health Department's website, if you guys would like to take a view, and it does have our survey in the community respondents. We also have hard copies at the Health Department, if you guys would also like one. And that completes my presentation.
Great information, and the fact that it's for folks who've been able to hear but not see the data and the fantastic graphs that are on here, it really brings it to life, if you will, the statistics on that. So I would encourage folks to go to the Arido County Health Department website to be able to see additional information, the numbers on that one.
Thank you.
Were you surprised at any of the results in any of the fields?
Arido County is a very healthy county. So for the homicide rate, I was surprised, and for the diabetes rate amongst its peer counties, I was surprised at that, too. So yes, that did surprise me.
So that'll be, all those pieces will be taken into consideration as you look at different programs and outreach?
Outreach.
And there's so many ways that the Health Department is already engaging with the public, too. So I didn't know if y'all had plans, anything different, or changed anything?
For this year, we do have our opioid team. So for our substance misuse, we do have two individuals that will be tackling that, will be partnering with several different agencies. Integrated Care of Greater Hickory, Statesville is actually a treatment center that we'll be working with, and they specifically help those that are in active addiction for opioid misuse. So that's exciting. That's something that we're working on right now.
Good to hear, too. And then keeping that out in the eye of the public, for those who are in need of help or support for family members, too.
Right.
Would be huge. I invite other comments.
What was the, I saw the percentages. What was the total response, the total number of folks that responded?
Responded. It was 614. So we had a total of 614 respondents.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Haupt, do you have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to remind everybody that one thing we have to continue paying attention to is our suicide amongst our young people, and trying to distinguish, you know, the drug overdoses, the proactivity that Beth has going on with EMS and all. I think that's a great program. But one thing that concerns me tremendously is the many suicides that we're going to have from her last data to now with younger teenagers in our country. That continues to rise.
It is sad, sad, but true.
It is.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Brown or Conley?
Thank you all.
Appreciate the time on that one, and I would like to ask if we have a motion to approve the presentation of our Arido County Community Health Assessment.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are unanimous on that one. Thank you for the work that went into that and great presentation. Manager Moll, it goes right back to you again, please.
Absolutely, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider an economic development incentive for Project Thor, and Ms. Jen Bozer with Arido County Economic Development Commission is here to make this presentation to the board.
Thank you, Manager Moll, and Chair Melissa Nader, and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to present this economic incentive request. I'm Jen Bozer, President and CEO of Arido County Economic Development Corporation. I'm here tonight to present a request for MacCombs Steel, also known as Project Thor, for consideration for an economic development incentive grant. The MacCombs Steel Company is a fourth-generation privately-held company that was founded in 1929 as MacCombs' trailer and machine, as a contractor in public works construction. Today, MacCombs Steel has more than 90 employees and operates across the southeast United States, is a leader in manufacturing, development, distribution, and sale of structural and miscellaneous fabrication, service center, and erection business. The company is planning to expand their facilities on their current site at 117 Slingshot Road in Statesville, North Carolina, with an anticipated investment of $7,864,000 in new machinery and equipment. The company has 94 existing employees and would be looking to add up to 15 jobs with an average wage of $55,733. The company would plan to make the full investment by December 31st of 2027. In accordance with Arido County's economic development policy, the Arido EDC requests an economic incentive grant to MacCombs Steel for up to $101,749, based on a capital investment total of $7,864,000. The grant is performance-based and would be payable over a period of five consecutive years at 50% of the assessed value of new tangible personal property and 80% of assessed value of real property as a result of the private investment by the company. On behalf of the EDC, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for your consideration, not your request, my request, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Jen, I have one question for clarification. Is it 7,860,000 or 64,000?
I have 64,000. Do you have something different?
We had 60, so I just want to make sure we have the same number.
I'll have to check. Do you want me to check real quick?
I think Ms. Anderson is pulling up the original to see.
I could be going blind.
Oh, that's okay. We just want to make sure we have the right number. But we can go ahead with the process, and we'll just confirm that number.
Continue the process and verify. But I do want to say that's outstanding fourth-generation. Local business still growing, the demand is there. It's nice to have consistent growing of our existing companies on that one, too. And I'll invite the board to ask any questions on that before I open the public hearing.
You're right.
Thank you.
So was Erica?
It's, they're correct. It's 7,860,000.
Okay, so the numbers that's in your packet is correct.
The packets are correct, okay.
Sorry, just want to make sure we're.
Clarification's always good at this point, especially before writing on that, too. And if there's no further questions or comments, then I will open the public hearing for Project Thor, as presented by Jen for the request. I have no one signed up for Project Thor for comments. Is anyone here to speak on Project Thor? Seeing and hearing them, then I will close the public hearing and ask if we have a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry, Jean, say.
He did. All right, go ahead, Commissioner Haupt.
Make a motion to approve the economic incentive of 101,749 over a five-year period based on the company's investment of up to 7,860,000, creation of a minimum of eight jobs, up to 15 jobs, and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
You see it presented in your book, just as Commissioner Haupt has read? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are unanimous on that one.
Thank you so much.
All right, Manager Moll, that takes us right into administrative matters, if you will go through those. Now, we are going to summarize some of the things in our consent agenda. At the 4 o'clock hour, we are right here, prior to the regular meetings, to discuss these at length, however respecting staff during the time. We hear from them thoroughly. It's open to the public and also recorded. Then we send them on home to the house to see their family, and maybe get home to eat dinner in time. And with that being said, though, we approve those, and I'd ask Manager Moll to summarize those discussions that we put on the consent agenda earlier.
Absolutely, thank you. The following items were reviewed at the 4 o'clock and agreed by the board to place on the consent agenda. We had a request from the Fire Tax Oversight Committee on behalf of Cool Springs Volunteer Fire Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 39 to allocate $44,856.22 from the countywide fire service district undesigned unreserved fund balance to assist with unexpected apparatus repairs. There was a request from the Fire Services and Emergency Management for approval to apply for a 2023 local emergency shelter capacity grant program to install a transfer switch at Northview Church of Christ for use as a shelter. This is a non-matching grant, and our request is in the amount of $44,830.29. There's a request from Emergency Communications for approval of Change Orders 8 and 9 for the Arido County Viper Simulcast System project to purchase and replace the Olin Tower and to complete the Barium Springs Tower modifications. The total amount of these two change orders was $666,080. Approval to proclaim April, or excuse me, May the 19th through the 25th of 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week. A request from Social Services for approval of the Department of Health and Human Services Arido County Memorandum of Understanding for fiscal years '24, '25, and '25, '26 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 108A-74. There was a lot of discussion about this, but we have to agree and approve this memorandum of understanding in order to receive funds to provide vital services to our citizens. There was a request from the Planning and Development Department for approval of a resolution amending the MAP review officer list. A request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 41 to recognize and appropriate insurance claim proceeds in the amount of $331,961. A request from the Finance Department to call for a public hearing on Tuesday, June the 4th, 2024, at 6 o'clock PM to consider the fiscal year '25 budget. A request from Administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number 40 to appropriate fund balance to Arido Statesville Schools to coordinate and run youth football athletics. This came out of our workshop, and Arido Statesville Schools has agreed to provide this service for the county. This is an additional $115,000 that will go to the existing 85 that we fund them, and it will be a total of $200,000 for them to coordinate and run this program, along with making their fields available for those nonprofit athletic associations to use free of charge. A request from Administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number 42 to appropriate fund balance to purchase a rook with attachments, a truck, and a trailer to pull the rook. That was in the amount of $739,830. Again, this request came out of our budget workshop, and the rook is really an armored, for lack of a better term, forklift where you can raise individuals up to a higher story, where they can get a better advantage when they have situations like where they have an individual that's in a home that's shooting at them, where they have a standoff situation. We have experienced that, unfortunately, in the past, where we have had people that are in a home, a second story, shooting out of a second-story window, and we have no way to elevate and get to that second story. So this is equipment to protect those officers. It also, we could use it to go and retrieve individuals. Unfortunately, they may have been wounded or injured. So there's a lot of different uses for it, and it's just another tool in the toolkit to help protect our citizens and our law enforcement and first responders. The final item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of the April 2024 releases and refunds.
Lot of great information on that one, too. So that ends our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous on the consent agenda. Continuing on down, we do not have any announcements for boards or commissions. However, let's talk a little bit about, since we have some folks that may not have listened to us in the past, as far as previous meetings, we do have currently opportunities to serve on the county's website and various different boards and commissions that we would love to have some volunteers for, because currently, they have been posted as of our last meeting, two weeks ago, and we have not had a lot of excitement yet. But I can feel there might be some excitement in the room this evening, so there's an opportunity to serve and offer your skill set, your time, and your talents as a way to be a part of our community. So I encourage y'all to take a look at our Arido County website and ways that you can serve. And Amy, did you have anything else you need to add to that? Is that the best way to check that? Any questions, we can reach out to Amy Anderson, our clerk to the board, with questions, and a phone number is also on our website. Manager Moll, we don't have any appointments yet on that. So how about any unfinished business?
None to report.
Board, any unfinished? Okay. That takes us to the public comment period, which it is the second meeting of the month, and I have a feeling that might be why we have some folks here this evening. And with that, the board conducts a public comment period at its second regular meeting of each month. The purpose of the public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to the county government. Each speaker that is signed up is allotted three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair in the order names appear on the sign-in sheet. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. Comments are directed to the board as a whole. Responses by the board are at their discretion, but public comment period is not intended to be a question-and-answer period, but rather a time for the board to hear from the public and take such matters raised under advisement. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and not engage in slander or name-calling. Citizens should not discuss any of the matters which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to matters regarding personnel, or matters which are made up confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documents with a clerk to the board. And with that, I will open the public comment period for this evening, and the first name we have is signed up is Jeanette Dickens. If you'll please approach the microphone and state your name and address. If you'll please approach the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jeanette Dickens, and I live in High Point, North Carolina. But I am the president of Books for Birthdays. That is a 501(c)(3) registered nonprofit. And I actually want to tell you about our mission. We are a nonprofit that gives new personalized books to children in foster care for their birthdays. I'm here to follow up on a letter that I mailed to, I sent to the commission chair, Ms. Melissa Nader, on March the 25th, and about supporting our Books for Birthdays. Our nonprofit began right here in Statesville, North Carolina, on June the 1st of 2015. We then made our inaugural presentation of books to the Aridale County Department of Social Services on July 1st, 2015. We continued working through your director, Mrs. Yvette Smith, to distribute a total of 689 books to children in foster care in Aridale County over the past nine years. Since beginning in Aridale County, we have added other counties, Davison's County, Randolph County Social Services, and also High Point Social Services. For many years, my husband and I lived here in Aridale County. Both our sons grew up and graduated from the public schools here in Aridale County, and my husband retired from pastoring here. We relocated to High Point, North Carolina, but we did not forget about Aridale County or Statesville. Since we began here, we have continued to deliver books to your county for the past nine years. And we wanted to, as I stated in the letter, I wanted to ask the county to remember us or to donate to us in your 2024 and '25 fiscal budget for our mission work. So that is why we would like to request your continued support to help us continue serving the children in Aridale County foster care programs, to give them a new book, and these books are given to them so that they can take with them wherever they go. And if the child remains in the foster care system more than a year, each year, Mrs. Smith tells me that child is looking for their birthday book. So please continue to support us as we support your children here in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Jeanette, just one more moment. I'm going to ask you to step back to the microphone, too, for just a minute, because I'm on the board with DSS. We were talking about foster care, and then this month is awareness.
Yes.
Of foster care families. And then the program that they're doing is a night out for the foster care families while the children are with the staff.
Right.
And gives them an opportunity for that. So we thank you for your involvement.
Yes.
Continued effort as well. So the other part, I would like to take your information, too, as well to the Aridale County Partnership for Young Children, which works with the Dolly Parton Library.
Yes.
And there's some collaborative efforts that I think we can look at as well for that, too.
Wonderful.
Amy, do you have her contact information and go say with that letter and all, too? So I'll follow up with you.
Okay, I have some additional copies of the letter if you need them.
If you would please, if you would like to leave that with Amy, that way I can share a copy with the board as well.
Okay, great. Thank you again.
Thank you for your continued efforts, because that's, it's an opportunity, like you said, for the kids to have something special and recognized.
For their birthday.
As well.
Yes, thank you.
And I'll give you a minute to get that over. You can go ahead and present that to her now. It'd be great. Thank you again. Matt Isaac is next to sign up on there. If you'll please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
I'm Matt Isaac. I live on Normandy Road, which is just outside the city of Mooresville. As I recall, the April 16th meeting, I believe it was Scotty Brown who mentioned he's lived in Aridale County his entire life. Is that correct? If I may, by a show of hands from the commissioners, how many of the commissioners have lived in the county for most or all of their lives?
All.
I can skip the next question then. I was going to ask how many have lived within an hour's drive of Aridale County, but it's redundant. And if I may, one more question. By a show of hands, how many of the commissioners do not have an interest in owning or via making money in some way in the short-term rental industry in Aridale County?
That's not unlike.
I have no interest.
I don't have any short-term rental.
I don't either.
By a show of hands, if you don't mind. Thank you very much, Mr. Hoop. I got you noted there also. What I'd like to proceed to are other municipalities who have dealt with short-term rental issues throughout the country. I'll start off with Fort Worth. In 2023, I believe it was, the city, in the city, short-term rentals are allowed only in specific areas that are zoned for them, like commercial or industrial areas, as well as mixed-use areas that include both commercial properties and residential properties. Registration is required, and registrations would not be transferable once a property is sold. Registration may be revoked based on violations. In Nashville, and this again was, this was in 2023, or excuse me, in 2018, the Metro Council voted to phase out non-owner occupied short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. In Salt Lake City, it was recently passed that any short-term rental is considered a rental for a period of under 30 days. The only short-term rentals are hotels, motels, rooming houses, and bed and breakfasts. There's really no such thing as a short-term rental that we have here. Similar situations have transpired in Malibu, Miami Beach, which actually has an article that says Miami Beach is war on short-term rentals. Dallas has done the same. One argument I keep hearing for short-term rentals is, it's my property. I can do what I want with it. In many ways, as a constitutional conservative, I agree with that. I'm a capitalist. But I think there is inferred a caveat. That caveat is, yes, you can do whatever you want with your property as long as you are not a detriment to the neighborhood. And I'm here to tell you, these short-term rentals are a detriment to the neighborhood. We need your help. We need them out of our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Michelle Brown? If you'll please state your name and address for us.
Michelle Brown. I live in Mooresville, North Carolina, and 612 Isle of Pines. My husband Trent and I have lived in Mooresville for over 20 years with our two teenage daughters. Isle of Pines Road is a beautiful peninsula with lakeside homes on each side of the road. Our neighborhood is friendly and quiet. We look out for each other, and we deeply care about our homes. A few years ago, short-term rental companies began purchasing houses in the neighborhood. In hopes of making this issue real for you, I'd like to share some of my family's experiences with the short-term rental directly next to my home. For years, this house was occupied by Haywood and Jackie. They were wonderful people and neighbors. In '22, they sold to Jason Hardy. He lives in Long Island, New York. Jason never had any intention of making this house his home. This was his business, his side hustle. His plan was to drop a business in the middle of a quiet residential neighborhood, and there was nothing we could do about it. Jason immediately began prepping the house to become a party house, or what I like to refer to as the unstaffed motel. The 2,000-square-foot, three-bedroom house sits on a very small lot with no natural privacy. He added multiple massive bunk beds in the bonus room. He converted the garage into a party room. He added a bonfire pit and storage for four kayaks, dumped gravel to mark his tiny path to his 10 feet, excuse me, waterfront, all only 50 feet from my bedroom. The unstaffed motel started off with a bang last spring when we saw the small property listed on Airbnb to sleep 14 people and multiple pets. This property can be rented for as little as one night. What we've witnessed so far: bachelor parties, sorority reunions, weddings, unsupervised high school parties, numerous large gatherings. This brings frequent strangers, roaming dogs, massive amounts of garbage, alcohol, and the reek of drugs. The first weekend that the renters were there, they had more cars than the rental property could handle, so they used my yard as their parking lot. We've seen grown men sitting on the roof hitting golf balls from the front yard into the lake, using my waterfront to launch kayaks, and fishing off of my dock. The bachelor party created a distinct memory for me. Trent and I weren't home, and my oldest daughter and her friends were on the dock all day. I've never been to a bachelor party, but I was shocked to hear that several grown men showed up at our front door asking for flour because they were baking. It was the first time I felt that the unstaffed motel was posing a threat to my family. I contacted the owner. He told me I should move, get better insurance, and don't ever contact me again. We're nervous about it. It's depreciated the value of our home, and we're asking for help. These aren't homes. They're full-time businesses. Why are we allowing businesses and a revolving door of strangers to be dropped into residentially zoned communities?
Michael Charles?
My name is Michael A. Charles. I live at 596 Isle of Pines Road in Mooresville. My wife and I bought our house in December of 2015. This was going to be our retirement. We revamped the entire house, brought the property up value. It's increased every since. Well, we wanted to have a nice, quiet retirement home here in Mooresville. With these short-term rentals, a lot of that is changing. Our road has a speed limit in our section of 25 miles per hour, because we're down towards the end. With these short-term rentals, there's a lot of traffic now, not only from the renters, but also from the cleaning crews that come to clean up after the renters. And there's just a lot more traffic. We have a five-year-old grandson. We get every Friday. We are afraid to walk down the street because of the curves and the traffic and the speed of the traffic. These short-term rentals are increasing, which is also going to lead to property devaluation. The same gentleman that she talked about was looking at the house beside of us, because it was for sale at the time, but it didn't need any work. And so he's a contractor, so he didn't buy it. We'd already made our mind up. If he did buy it, we were moving. I don't want to live beside a short-term rental, because I don't want to go through what Michelle and Trent are going through. I'm asking you all to help. I've been here before. I've heard some other comments. I know there's stuff in the works. There's litigation going on. You probably can't talk a lot about it. But we are asking for help. We are taxpayers, and we're paying a whole lot more tax because of the valuation we had last year. But that's okay. I'm happy on that street. I want to stay on that street. We bought it to live out the rest of our lives there. But I Googled "short-term rentals" on Isle of Pines Road in Mooresville, North Carolina, and 12 entries popped up. They weren't there when I bought the house, and they're growing. It's becoming a business street, and I don't think that's the place for it. It's a beautiful street. To me, it's the best street in Mooresville. But that's going to lose its value if this continues the way it is, so I'm asking for your help. Thank you.
Jack Benyon?
My name's Jack Benyon. I live at 263 Beaton Path Road in Mooresville. I actually wasn't going to sign up to speak this evening, but the last couple of days, there's been enough changes. As you can tell from the people behind me, it's that time of year again. We've had two new communities approach me to get into our group. They've, in the last weekend, they both had massive parties next door to their houses. They all had the deputies, the sheriffs out. One deputy told a neighbor not to call the sheriff's department anymore, to call the homeowner. But how do you call a homeowner when you don't know the phone number or who it is? The second home, two different neighbors called it two different times after 11 o'clock, and deputies came out both times. The deputy told them, "Well, all we can do is come out, write a ticket. It'll be $35 a pop, and as soon as we leave, they're just going to turn it on anyway," you know, turn it back up. So they both felt that they were getting blown away by the deputies and that they were wasting their time calling the sheriff. The other reason I decided to sign up tonight was just before coming tonight on the TV news, Airbnb has now said that pool rentals are illegal. Once a rented house has a pool, it now becomes a public pool with public regulations. And I don't think any of us thought about that in the last two years that we've been discussing this. So I guess my question is, is it too late to add that into the concerns and regulations that we've been working through and waiting through the court litigation to do something? I mean, if the person that owns that pool is going to have to come and make it ADA compliant, put in lifts and everything, they may think about that pool being a source of helpful income for that house once they decide that they're going to have to spend all this money. Thank you.
That concludes all that have signed up. Is there anyone else that would care to speak during public comment period on any matter? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment period for this meeting. And Manager Moll, I will ask you, would you please summarize the steps that a citizen should take if there is noise ordinance or noise nuisance or things such as that? Recommendations?
Yes, and as several Mr. Charles and Mr. Benyon referenced, we are in active litigation regarding short-term rentals, so we're not, we can't discuss that. But we do have a noise ordinance. So if there is an issue with noise, as the residents have done, certainly contact the sheriff's office. They're correct. They can write a citation, but at least they can be visited by a law enforcement officer. There are, if there's excessive trash or garbage or things, we may be able to help through our solid waste. But those are the primary issues. I'm looking at Ms. Valdez to see if there's anything else as far as the way things are currently.
No, and I don't know if you want me to address specific comments or not, but again, yes, the county has been sued. The county did adopt regulations through its zoning ordinance to address the short-term rentals. The county was then sued with two different lawsuits, and so it is in active litigation. And short of that, if you have issues with parking on the roads, if you have issues with noise under the noise ordinance, those are things that are covered separately from the zoning, and you can certainly call the sheriff's department or municipalities if you're within the city limits.
Your words are not falling on deaf ears. As you noticed, we are all from here. We've watched the change, and it's changed the dynamics. So it seems to be a problem in our area across the whole entire state. It's actually probably the whole country at the rate things are going. We're not going to, I don't want to use the word "give up," but we're not. This is, we're aware of the problems, and we are truly sorry for those of you who are being directly impacted. So continue to come see us.
I'm sorry, if I can add one thing. And I hesitate to, no offense to anybody that's here to speak, I hesitate to engage in the conversation because of the litigation that's pending. But the comments that were made as far as the registration, the case law in North Carolina specifically says that local governments cannot require registrations for the rental properties. And so I bring that up to address that, one, so that you all are aware of that. But then, two, that that is not something that this body can change. That's a state law issue. And so I was asked to address that aspect of it, but there are but there are things that tie this board's hands in what they can and cannot do in order to try and address this issue.
Are you allowed to define the term "short-term rental"? For example, can you?
Sir, though I have closed, not to be directing at you, but just to follow proper procedure, I have closed the public comment period. So if there's further questions in regards to this, it's our turn to be able to respond if we so choose. With that being said, please follow up with those questions in email form. That way, we can respond to you in a proper format. Okay, so please, those questions that you have now, if you will be glad to send them to us or to our attorney, we'll be glad to address them in that matter. All right, thank you. All right, anything further for? All right, anything further for the, at this point, I do want to turn to Commissioner comments and updates. Commissioner Haupt, would you like to kick us off?
I just want to say, appreciate the budget workshops we've been part of, and thank you for helping me call in with my healing process. But I just wanted to ask Lisa on that last topic, if she can look into the pool issue and whichever person was speaking up a minute ago, would she make sure she engaged with them and get an answer to whatever question they had? I know there's an awful lot of people, as we all know, that are very frustrated with this process, and we are too. And then it's tied up in litigation to where it's hard for us to comment on it. But I just wanted, as you said, we, we're not falling on deaf ears. We just are prohibited from doing what we don't have control and authority to do without legislation out of Raleigh. But I just wanted also for Beth, if she would, and she maybe was going, I mentioned in the four o'clock, to congratulate and identify the award winners for ECOM for their awards. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for the prayers and comments for my family.
Thank you, Commissioner Haupt. Commissioner Brown?
Well, I don't have a lot of comments on new things. This bothers me. And, you know, we are, this has been going on for two, three years of us working on it, and it bothers me each time that we're, it seems like we're not getting anywhere, but we're tired a little bit right now. We're working on things. But I do, it bothers me a little bit about our sheriff's department. You know, I hope you all guys know that the sheriff requires all deputies carry cards. When they come out, you know, ask them for a card. They're supposed to give you one. That's the sheriff's thing. So get a card if you have a problem with these guys and call their supervisor if you think they're doing wrong, because we got a great sheriff's department. And these guys, their hands are kind of tied too, but they are here for our safety. So, but grab a card from them.
I'll kind of echo Commissioner Brown's comments, and I really do, my heart goes out. And I'm blessed, I live in a neighborhood that we all get along, as Ms. Brown spoke earlier in your living there. And it is a, as Mr. Isaac spoke and talked about constitutional rights, that we all have a right to our, to conduct and use our property as we see fit with the limitation we're not impacting someone else. And that's the very frustrating part for me. This board has attempted some things, and due to the way our system is built, you know, we can't speak very much as to the legal process, and we have to let that play out. But understand, we hear your cries, and we want to do what is right, fair, and just. The problem with right, fair, and just, there are three streets that very seldom intersect each other. But, so, it is not going without being noticed, and we're trying to do everything that we can to make sure that we're helping as much as we can. On a different note, Monday, to me, is one of the most sacred days in my belief system, Christmas and Easter, probably the first two, and then Monday is Memorial Day. We'll all be celebrating and enjoying probably the lake or wherever you happen to be. As a veteran of 21 years in the United States Army, I ask each of you to take a moment to remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice to give us the freedoms that we have in this country today. Don't thank a veteran. I don't deserve thanks on Memorial Day. Take a moment, encourage your family to stop, remove your hat, say a prayer, moment of silence, raise a glass, and remember the families that didn't bring home, that we were not able to bring home their loved ones to them. Thank you.
Well said. And Commissioner Stroud, I have to also say that, and thanks to those many that have been a part of our military service, and actually currently at our Aradell County Library is a Smithsonian display that travels around, and we were fortunate to have it fit within our library because of the size of it. And if you haven't been, I encourage you to go to our Statesville Library Branch to see Voices and Votes and those who gave the ultimate price and served to continue to have the democracy that we have. And it was years and years of history, an opportunity to read and see where we've come in our country, to have our freedoms that we have. And also, this is another way to recognize, a lot of times, we don't always stop to think that our DSS, our Department of Social Services, also works with an elderly population. We know, we realize they work with children a lot, but they also provide a service to our elderly population. And that was recognized in the month of May, too. So it takes a lot of folks and a lot of team members to make our country work, and it is the same for our county here. We're fortunate to have a lot of strong members in our teams and our staff providing that. And I didn't know this until last night, that Aradell County has a Sports Hall of Fame. So I said in the Civic Center last night, recognizing seniors from different high schools. We've got a lot of talent here locally, football to soccer to lacrosse. I was not able to relive any of my glory days. However, there was a lot of folks that were recognized all the way back from, oh my gosh, they recognized even Dale Earnhardt being senior, being from the area in the sports, of course, with NASCAR. But it was interesting to see some of our local folks, we recognized and put into a Hall of Fame, and some of their coaches. So even from like Coach Mahew, who's been coaching for over 50 years, maybe pushing 60 years from South Aradell High School, and having him there, it was, speaking of just the sports, it gives folks and kids a lot of times a way to connect that they wouldn't have otherwise. So it was great to see those awards going on. And on that note, I will pass it to Vice Chairman Conley.
The Conley's Corner, as Brad says.
That's right, the Conley's Corner.
Conley's Corner.
That's right. If you'd see him on YouTube.
Short-term rentals, we feel you. We've been knee-deep in that. We can't go into great detail, but we've been in knee-deep in it. Our hands are tied in Raleigh a lot, so won't get into a lot of that, but our hands are tied a lot of ways. Legislation needs to be passed, and I'll get off that topic real fast. Growth, we talked about impact fees. That is so vital, so, so vital, that we've got to have. We've got to charge these developers and people who come in here. Raleigh has got to change that where we can do it. They've got to stop listening to the lobbyists. They've got to stop listening to the people who give the contributions. And all of you have got it, guarantee you, stack some mail when people run for House or Senate locally. It's paid for by homeowners association, insurance companies, associations, builders. It's standing in fine print. They're buying the votes, basically. I'm sorry, but they are. Our legislators need to listen to the people, not the lobbyists and not the people who's bankrolling their campaigns. Tonight, we took a big step about youth sports, trying to help our kids. I think that's vitally, vitally important. And another thing we've done was the money for the rook. We've got people in the room now that answer the calls, to send these men and women out to these very serious calls. We got people, medical rescue EMS in the room that go to these calls. Their lives are on the line. We got people in the room that are actually law enforcement to go to the calls and actually on the team, our cert team. So I think this is a good step. We, as a board, are determined to keep our people safe, our citizens safe, our officers safe. And I just want to send a message to anybody that wants to come in this county and do something stupid. If you play stupid games in this county, you might get a stupid prize. So keep that in mind. We're not going to play for people in this county when it comes down to the safety of the public, the safety of everyone, officers, every single person. And that is vital, and that sets up here, and we take that seriously, and we're not going to play with it. So with that said, that's all I have, but it's very important, and I think we made some good milestones this evening.
You know, one other thing, Beth, I think you might help me with is the, I know a lot of people, when you have troubles, and especially short-term rentals, they call 911. How do they find the admin number?
878-3100. 704-878-3100, that's the non-emergency line they can call.
That's what we need to be pushing out there to people. 911's easy to remember, but it ties up our ECOM.
And law enforcement don't have the magic wand when it comes to that. I mean, we've already, we've discussed that in depth and stuff, so it's difficult, and it's a shame. I mean, it is, it's a shame. And you said it best, we live in America, and this, you know, my land, I do what I want to, but once it starts interfering with other people, so it becomes a problem.
We thank you all for being here. We are live every first and third Tuesday, so if you're not able to be here in person, you can watch, and we are recorded, so you can go back and see previous meetings that we've had and see our agendas. We believe in doing the people's work in front of the people. So if we don't look like we're rehearsed, we are not. We do this live and in person. So with that, I'm going to pass it down to our county manager for your report or any other business that needs to take place this evening.
Absolutely. I do have a few items to report. First, I wanted, we talked a little bit about goals and impact fees. So it is that time of year where the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, they put out to all the counties in the state of North Carolina to submit their ideas for legislative goals. So it is that time for us to create a list of goals to submit on behalf of Aradell County to our legislators. What the NCACC will do is they'll receive all of the recommendations regarding goals. They'll see where the commonalities are, and then they'll rank them in priority and pick like a top 10 list. And that is the list of goals that they will take forward and advocate on all the county's behalf with our legislative team. So I do have a few that are on the list, and impact fees is one that we talked about, basing the county tier designations on zip code, because our county is so diverse from the southern end of our county to the northern end of our county. So changing that tier designation would help various areas in our county. Restoring lottery funds back to what was actually approved when the voters approved to do that back in, I think it was '05, 2005, when North Carolina approved that 35% of the lottery proceeds was supposed to go directly to education, and that percentage has dropped. I think right now it's at about 30%. So restoring that 35% of lottery funds to go to education. Those are some of the ones that I have on the list based on previous conversations. Some of these came out of our budget workshop that we had the last two weeks. So be thinking of other things, other goals to submit, and let myself or Ms. Anderson know, and we'll compile that list and put some more information to those goals, and we'll bring those back to the board to approve before we submit those. The due date to the NCACC is August 23rd, so we do have some time to get those created. As Commissioner Haupt said, we did have five individuals that work at our Emergency Communication Center that were recognized and received state awards, and that's just, that speaks volumes to the staff that we have and the work that they do. And I did want to recognize them. Assistant Director Nikki Carswell, she received Director of the Year Award. Jamie Barrier received the State's Radio Technician Award of the Year. Scott Niblock, the Support Personnel of the Year Award. Kristi Harbison, the Trainer of the Year. And then Ashley Crankshaw, the Supervisor of the Year Award. All of those five individuals that work at our ECOM Center received those state awards. So that, I think that speaks volumes to the staff that we have and how hard they work.
We've got some of our folks sitting back here right now that answer those calls, so thank you all so much for that.
And just one final note to make sure everybody has this on their calendar. Monday, we will be closed on the 27th. As Commissioner Stroud said, we'll be observing Memorial Day. So Monday, the 27th, will be, we will not be open. But that is a day to remember those individuals that have died to serve and protect us. So please make sure you keep that in your hearts and minds. That's all.
Anything further from the board? All right.
Yeah, Brad, Brad, the jail will be open, so tell people don't get too happy.
The jail will be open and available. I did want to, just one little quick thing, and just kind of said that calling sheriff's department, you kind of feel like you're spinning the wheels. Sometimes we do as well. Continue to call. Document, 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 you know? If the deputy says, "Don't call again," and it's bad again, call again. Keep calling, because it's going to get logged, it's going to get documented. And that, it just at least gives us a tool to argue from.
Commissioner Haupt, did you have anything further?
I just was going to apologize if my voice is hoarse. I was going to just ask Beth and Bert to comment a little bit. We've all had discussions about the growth and remind people that we don't have the control that a lot of people think we do about stopping, you know, petition annexations and things like that from municipalities. And Beth and I talked specifically today about the types of impact fees that are different. You know, municipalities can do one thing, but it's really not an impact fee. Can Bert and Beth touch on those two things since you're in the room?
Absolutely. One of the things that we spoke about, there's a difference between having to do certain things and make some improvements specifically for that site and the development of that site and impact fees. Those are actually separate things. So, for example, if there's a project that's been approved and they have to do site-specific work regarding adding turn lanes to gain access to that property, some people believe that that's an impact fee, but that's really not by definition what we're talking about as far as impact fees. In the state of North Carolina, impact fees are not legal. We cannot charge impact fees. But other states do charge that. And really what it is, it's nothing intended to be punitive to that developer, but it's to partner with them in the sense that if they, if they're building a development that says, you know, it has 500 or 1,000 or 1,500 homes, that definitely has an impact to that community. Specifically, it has an impact to the road infrastructure. It has an impact to the schools that the children that are going to move into that community go to in that district. If that district or the school that serves that district where that development is occurring, if it's already at capacity, and then you're dropping in 1,500 homes, then you've got to build in addition to that school to accommodate the additional children that will be going to that school. So it's looking at things like that, and it's just giving that flexibility to do what some other states are doing and working with a developer to, for them to be a good partner with us, and so we can all grow together in a very managed and methodical way. It's difficult when you're in a reactive stance, because the growth is happening so quickly that you can't keep up with it. So our goal is, and what we strive to do, is be proactive and try to prepare for and do it in a managed way. But we're growing so quickly, it's very difficult to be proactive. We are finding ourselves in a very reactive way. Does that cover what you wanted?
And the fact that we can't control what the cities, as long as they're within their legal allowable reach for annexation.
Correct. We cannot, if a property, if a property is interested in developing and in order to have a more densely developed area, they would need public utilities, water and sewer. Well, the county doesn't provide water and sewers, so they would go to one of the adjacent municipalities and request annexation. And if it's adjacent to their corporate limits, or if it's within a certain distance, then they can petition for annexation, and they can then be inside that corporate limits. At that point, the county has no control of how that property is developed. We can't say, "No, you cannot be annexed," and "No, you can't develop it," "No, you can't." That is something between that property owner and the developer that's buying that property and the municipality that's annexing that property. So we get calls on a regular basis from residents that are upset about a development here or a development there, but it's not in the county's jurisdiction. So, I mean, we can't tell a municipality that they can or can't do that. That is up to that separate elected board and that governmental entity to make that decision.
And we encourage citizens to attend those meetings as well.
Amen.
Yep. Go stay, be a part of those as well. All right. We've had a lot of heavy topics, but I will say that I can't think of anywhere else better to live, maybe High Point, as y'all came to visit us, than that Aradell County. And I'm thankful for our neighbors that keep an eye on each other and continue to do so. Without anything further, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, right out of the box. All in favor, please. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.